We just want to congratulate you.
Ebony Sims.
Marsha.
Marsha Easley.
Good evening, I'm Marsha Easley. I'm a lifelong resident of Pontiac. I'm a member of the Pontiac School District. I'm a product of Pontiac Schools and I'm also the guardian and grandmother of an ITA student, my granddaughter. I'm talking on behalf of ITA because I took her out of a charter school. I used to come to all the board meetings before I even took her out. And I seen the thing they were doing at the board and I was very impressed. So I took her out of charter schools and put her in Pontiac High. I was a little disappointed that it didn't have advanced classes at Pontiac High. So she applied to ITA and got in. Since then, she's been getting straight A's, she's been on National Society. She's been doing very well. She's also a member of the robotics team, which are also an awesome group of students. I was a little disappointed that when they had the National Island Society inductee event the other day, I mean a few weeks ago, the no one from the board came and said, "Congratulations to these kids who are actually doing well." So I think it would be a shame if they took these kids out of... I know that you said this was just a formula or might not even happen, but if they took them out of ITA and put them in Pontiac High, I think that would be a disservice to them. Because first of all, they have a lot of stuff over there, they have a lot of equipment. They have a teacher over there that I'm sure, I know I think I'm right on this. She works with those kids on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, from 4:30 to 8 o'clock. On Saturdays, from 8 to 8. And she doesn't get paid anything. And these kids have been winning awards forever. They are a great group of kids, they are a big family. I went with them when they did, passed out candy at the M1 and they were just a big family. And I think it would make them all sad and I think it would not be a good idea to put them over there. At the high school, like I said, I know it's a formula and I hope it just doesn't happen. And I think it's very good that you hear everybody's opinion. Because even though, a lot of times I wish we had PTAs and stuff so you could hear more input from the parents and the students. You've got to listen to the students too, because they have, I'm sure, I hope some of them get up there and talk today. And I'm not going to say anything else, but thank you for listening to me.
Patricia Henderson.
Okay, I'm Patricia Henderson, I'm a parent pro at the Pontiac High School in ASD Room. I've been with the district for 23 years. Subbing, reading first, parent. My biggest concern is if this happened, of changing the schools to charter schools, it's just something I just can't deal with. I'm in the Grow Your Own program and I think that's going to affect me if that happens. So, I had so much to say before you spoke, because I didn't know what was going on, I was getting all the other stuff. But again, if we do go that route, I just don't, I don't like it. So, but that's what I'm hearing. So it may not be true, but I just don't want y'all to go that route. Because I want us to stay public. I mean, it's better for our students and me to be public. I've been in a charter school before, I know what they do. And I know how they shut down. But that's just, I came here angry, but I'm okay right now. I just don't want y'all to make them type of changes. Y'all know what I always say, I need some money.
I have petition, it's a few names on here and I can't read them unfortunately. So the last name looks like Taylor, maybe this is a Jesus, Santiago. It's about four names on here. Okay, there we go, there we go.
Good afternoon, board members, stakeholders, community members, staff members, and parents. I stand here before you today with a deep concern about the future of the International Technology Academy. And the impact they merger with Pontiac High could have, the effect, sorry.
Take your time.
And the effect a merger could have with the Pontiac High and ITA students.
ITA, oh, ITA was built as a place where students can receive a high-quality, technology-driven education in a small-focused learning environment. Parents choose ITA because they want their children to be in a school that offers challenging academics, strong college preparation, and a safe, supportive atmosphere where every student is known and valued.
If ITA merges with Pontiac High School, many families may decide to leave the district altogether, seeking alternatives that preserve the specialized education they originally signed up for. This could lead to declining enrollment and weaken the various school system this merger is meant to help with.
Beyond that, ITA students themselves are deeply invested in the education and worry about this change, and worry about what this change will mean for their future. The close-knit community and hands-on learning approach that ITA are major reasons why students succeed and feel confident about their academic paths. If the school loses its identity in a large merger, many students may feel their education needs are not being met, leading them to transfer or disengage. And personally, I'm in orchestra and at PHS, they don't have orchestra there.
We must listen to the voices of parents and students who choose ITA for a reason and work towards solutions that strengthen our schools without forcing families to make difficult decisions about their children's education. Let's find a path forward that ensures all students have access to the best possible learning environment and education without sacrificing what makes ITA unique. That's all.
Jasmine D. something. There we go.
Good afternoon, board members and stakeholders. My name is Jasper and I am a sophomore at ITA. I've been a part of the Pontiac School District for about 11 years at this point. My brother Jared Dutcher is an alumni from the year of 2018. So me and my family have been a big part of the Pontiac School District for many years. And I would like to raise some concerns with the fact that the board did not communicate necessarily directly to the stakeholders, or the parents, or the staff. I understand that Dr. Leverett mentioned that this is a new plan and that there is no plan directly to collapse or get rid of any program or school. But the fact that this has been rumored for a year or two now, there's always been some kind of mention throughout the school district that this could be a possibility and it was never directly talked to, to the students or the staff, is slightly concerning. And as a board, you should know that it is necessary to directly communicate to stakeholders and to your parents that this is such a big change, especially since this would change a lot of your students' and teachers' day-to-day lives. Not only are you moving us out of our building, again, I know that it is not a direct plan, but with the potential. As someone who has been in this program since kindergarten, the school has become a safe space for me. And with how kind and how open the teachers are to making themselves feel trustworthy and I've made a ton of friends that I've been comfortable and willing enough to help me go through whatever, and it is a very safe space. Not only would this be taking away a program that many students have grown up in, but you're taking away people's safe spaces. You have the possibility of taking away students' homes away from homes, their only way to feel safe. I know that this statement may not be true for everyone, but I know for at least a handful of students, this has become a place where they prefer to be instead of at their homes. Outside of it being a safe space, the school holds on to the robotics team and from my own personal experience, a second family to many. Wings of Fire is a team that brings so much to its students' lives, it brings out an interest in tech and engineering, leading those students to go on and live fulfilling and extraordinary lives. I know that if the team gets moved from ITA to PHS, most students wouldn't want to stay. Some students wouldn't necessarily feel safe at PHS with the bad stuff that we hear coming out of that school often. I personally wouldn't feel safe going there. Not only is it inherently from what is word of mouth, a violent school, they have openly said that they don't like those ITA kids. I'm scared that what would happen to I or others who aren't close friends with a PHS student would happen if they went there. So please, listen to our pleas and don't disrupt our day-to-day lives or our safety just for, to restructure the schools, thank you.
Maria, Maria Mendoza and also...
Good evening to everybody. I am here on behalf of all our children and our parents who are not able to attend for personal reasons or just because they don't speak English and are able to express what they have to say. With that said, to our personal opinions, we think that this restructure is not needed. Mainly thinking of our students who have been at this school at ITA since kindergarten. Splitting friends, siblings, and moving grades K through 2 to one building, 3 to 4 to another, and 5 to 6 would not only disrupt their lives, their security, and their self-esteem, and would bring so much stress to their lives as kids. With that, there will be no unity and no familiarity. Parents could also pull kids out of the district since they're splitting siblings apart. Me being a mom of a 2nd grader and a 3rd grader, that would be my choice, my decision basically, since it would be easier to pick both kids at once. Not to mention, single parents and working parents who are not able to make 2, 3 trips to different schools to pick up their kids. We want ILA to remain the same for our students, for our parents, for our teachers, since that's been working for them. The classes right now are amazing. My son, he speaks both fluently English and Spanish, which he learned at this school. The time these teachers provide for our kids, we should be grateful. We should be grateful and think about them when we talk about these type of plans. Lastly, I want ILA and ITA to be able to stay the same for all of us, since this is what's better for our children. Speaking, because I talk to my kids every single day about their school and they have nothing but amazing things to say. The teachers, the principal, the staff, their friends, everybody. With that being said, we're not just a school, we are a family. And we should not be taken apart from that. Lastly, I want to thank our amazing principal, our wonderful teachers, our staff, for all the effort, the time, the love they put into our kids. Because I believe that those teachers and these people that wake up every day to come and help our kids will help them become our future and great young people and adults. Thank you for your time.
I believe it's Yasli Ma Braun and Unique Robinson is next.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a parent from ITA. I have a senior coming out, I have a middle schooler and an elementary student. My daughter first tested into ITA in the 3rd grade. All of her siblings followed behind. ITA is a great place. ITA is a place where families can come and be welcomed as a family into their educational system. You guys are over education. ITA has exceeded the requirements as far as grades, as far as professionalism, as far as academics. And for that to be on the chopping block and to be held in consideration, to be disbanded and put back out into, I won't want to call it regular education, but you guys get what I'm saying. To me, that's a step backwards. All of my kids excel in everything that they do. We are a part of the Pontiac community. We vow to be the best that we can be in everything. My kids go to school every day and they prove that every day. Robotics, state championship, my daughter's a part of that team. I see her team members here all the time. My son just got, you know, nominated by the DSO. My daughter was the female athlete of 2024. So when I say that they excel at everything that they do, they need your support. Please don't take something that has been proven to work time and time again and dismantle it. I don't want Pontiac to become a statistic to where they say, "Well, you know, we had to balance the budget, we had to minimize the classrooms." Don't let Pontiac be a statistic to where we give up our children's future for a couple of dollars. ITA is a family, it is a system that has been proven to work. When my kids first signed up, they made a promise and a commitment to them that they would have a safe space, that they would have technology. And everything that they promised my kids, they have received. Every child that goes there, they have received it. They have kept their GPA up, they have done everything that Pontiac has asked them to do, please. If this is the plan that you guys have, please keep them in mind. Because the things that you guys are proposing is tearing them down, they are not on board with it. It's kind of stressful for them at this point. So please keep them in mind and do the best that you can to have this not be an issue. Thank you for your time and I appreciate it. But me as a parent, I will do what's best for my children, so please don't, don't let this be a setback in the community, thank you.
Lena I, L-E-N-A-I-A-H-A? I don't know if this is two words, one word. Okay, not here. Joseph Sinclair and Laura Marie.
Hello.
Hello.
Which one are you, Sinclair or Marie?
I'm Laura Marie.
Thank you.
All right.
Dang, my time started. Okay, hi, my name is Laura Marie and I'm the mother of two children who attend ITA. My oldest is in 5th grade and his brother, his younger brother is in kindergarten. Firstly, I want to say thank you to the union who got word out on this matter, was on the eventual agenda to discuss. I'm really grateful for the incomplete information that was shared so we have an opportunity to share our concerns before it's completed information. Like somebody else mentioned, it's been rumored around for a while and it's been kind of hushed and calming us down, but at this point, we are concerned. I also want to thank my friend and fellow mom who called me directly just 30 minutes before the start of this meeting so that I could be here today. I have my three kids, it's almost 9 o'clock and I did not leave because I wanted an opportunity to speak to you. It's my belief that the board does not value our children and their needs or the needs of their peers. It's also my belief that you underestimate the commitment these teachers have made to be a part of the Pontiac School District. It is also my belief that you underestimate the intelligence level of us parents and the fact that we do in fact care about where our children spend their days. My two boys attended a 3K and a 4K program before entering school, before entering kindergarten. They learned skills that positioned them to ready for a challenge educationally. My oldest son attended two schools before we tested into ITA and found the perfect fit. We didn't land here by chance, we learned of it from a friend whose son was gifted in the same way that our oldest was. We then applied, interviewed for a space, my oldest and then my youngest son followed. We love ITA, the history and legacy it carries, the robotics programming opportunities, technology-focused learning, arts and theater opportunities, and the teachers. Shout out to my kids' teachers. They've all worked so diligently with them academically and socially. We chose ITA, which allowed us to stay in Pontiac School District instead of choosing another school elsewhere. We did this quite frankly because we didn't want to go to the schools that our addresses directly routed us to, because of my children and a lot of these other children's exposure before school. My question for all of you is, if this proposed change does move forward and you give us completed information, who do you think that, what do you think that decision is going to drive us as parents to do? When we've already made a diligent, intentional decision to send our kids to a school that sets, that's set apart strategically for the academic components of it? And maybe, and maybe you're relying on the fact that many parents likely don't have the flexibility or ability to choose another school elsewhere. Maybe that's like the back pocket, you likely recognize that many of them are stuck within the confines of what the city offers. So they might not have a car, the gas money, the work schedule, et cetera, to make another school happen. So realistically, they'll be stuck with whatever you propose, okay? They're just going to have to go with it and their student won't be challenged. And that just says to me ultimately that you don't care. And I think it's also, before, I only have 10 seconds left, it's really ironic to me that the phones weren't working today for the district all day either. But have a great day, thank you.
T. Panchico, I believe that's the last name. Paloma. Rosa Rodriguez. Paul Sandy. Oh, Rosa, okay, Rosa and Paul, both of you can head that way. Just get close, we want to hear from them.
Good evening, everybody. I'm a little bit nervous because I wasn't expecting to speak, but I am here for my son. He is an ITA student and he brought to me a concern Friday. He's like, "Mom, something's going on with the school, I'm not really sure, they're saying they're going to merge or close." And I said, "Okay." He's like, "What are you going to do, Mom?" So I'm like, "Let me make some phone calls, let me see exactly what's going on, okay?" So I called, I spoke with somebody and they said there was no vote going to happen, this is just, everything would be on a, like on a...
Agenda.
Agenda as to what was going to happen. So I'm here, listening to everything and, you know, talking with my son and asking him, "What if we were to merge or be a possibility?" And, and I asked him, "What do you think about that?" He's like, "I don't like that, Mom." And I'm like, "Why?" I was like, "When you think of Pontiac High School, what do you think?" He's like, "I think of violence." He's like, "I think of drugs, I think of being unsafe." And I said, "Well, why?" And he was in the marching band in middle school and he said, "Mom, I went..." I think it was a day that he had to go to the school and he's like, "Mom, I went to that school and right away, there was a fight, it started to, you know, there was a fight that broke out." And I was like, "Is there no fights that happen at ITA?" He's like, "No, Mom." He's like, "It's a safe place, I feel safe there." And I said, "Okay." So, I used to, I'm like an old, I went to Pontiac High School back, back when it was the Huskies, okay? So, I went there for a year. And hearing my son say that, and it's been a few years, nothing has changed. Because hearing him say that is what I went through in some of the classes, you know, it's, it's not good, in my opinion. And just, and just from hearing him and then having these students here, you know, having them being passionate to be here, you know, I, when I heard that they weren't going to vote, I thought, "Well, you know, I'm not going to bring them, I'll just, you know, see, hear, get the information, kind of have a conversation with them." But it's enough to stress him out and seeing these kids here, it matters, you know? ITA is a school, like the other parent was saying, that we're like a family, these teachers, they do so much, you know? And sometimes they'll text me and they'll tell me, "Your kid is doing so well." And that makes me so happy inside to hear that, okay?
Thank you. Jose Wabara. Oh, Paul Sandy, sorry about that. And Jose, you're next, you're on deck. There we go.
Good evening, everyone. My, my name is Paul Sandy and I'm a teacher at ITA as well as the Vice President of the PEA Teachers Union. I come to you today wearing both hats. What is the restructuring and is it already decided? Why is the district restructuring after having positive financial progress and student enrollment? We have fielded questions from dozens and dozens of our staff. These changes would significantly affect every person in the entire school district? And I believe that these changes are far too drastic and will disrupt not only the elementary school communities as well as ITA and ILA. Is this truly the best way to save money? I want to also speak for the ITA school community. You've seen some of my favorite students and parents and former students. I want to strongly advocate that ITA stays at the WHRC Building. We're not only a strong program that routinely sends students to colleges like University of Michigan, Michigan State, we have a culture of project-based learning, but like you've heard, we are a family, we're a community. We care about one another. Our students are hardworking and kind and our staff has served the district for many years. Our staff has done what we've needed to do. Many teachers took pay freezes for years. Our program for grades 6 through 12 has moved a total of seven times since 2012. We were told that moving back into the WHRC in 2023 would be our permanent home. If this change happens, it will be my and our fourth building move in six years. Please allow us stability and consistency. Listening to our needs will allow the district to retain and recruit high-quality teachers to the Pontiac School District that we know and love. And will allow us to focus on providing a world-class education to the children of Pontiac. Students and families deserve to be a part of the decision-making process of our school district. We will only make this district better together. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Happy Monday, it is a Monday. Alrighty. As an International Technology Academy alumnus and part of its, one of its founding classes, I feel compelled to share my perspective on what ITA meant to me, to my peers, and to many families who like mine, saw a reason to stay in the school district. ITA wasn't originally supposed to be an international baccalaureate school. And while that never materialized, the staff still held themselves to IB-level standards. Teachers like Ms. Bernard collaborated with other teachers in a week, weekly, to refine instruction. We had principals who pushed for 100% graduation rate and made sure students were ready for college or trade school. The competitive spirit was strong, like in the class of 2016 where the top three students were in a tight battle for a valid victorian. One of ITA's strengths was its collaboration. During the first week of school, projects were assigned, where every class played a role, reinforcing teamwork and critical thinking. ITA gave students confidence in their futures and made me believe that I could be president one day. I understand concerns about ITA students lacking access to programs at the Pontiac High due to transportation. Transportation was never an issue for OTEC, the nursing program, or early college. If access is the problem, why not address transportation instead of dismantling ITA? Neighboring cities like Waterford have multiple high schools. With $100 million budget, why camp Pontiac? Families who feel options are being taken away will leave the district and potentially leave for charter schools. Even the ITA Hall of Fame doesn't fully reflect the students of our alumni, the success of our alumni, many of who have gone on to achieve great things. Instead of breaking ITA apart, we should be rebuilding the culture that makes ITA so great. I urge you to pause this, any decision. And if there's no decisions, let us not have the fear hanging over our family's head of if the possibility of ITA is being closed. I dealt with this once back in 8th grade, oh, so many years ago now, wow. And with that, I kept fighting then, I'm going to fight now because I have a little sister, I have nieces and nephews who are here at ITA, believing it sets them on a high pedestal. So, thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Charmaine Gonzalez and Jorge Orta. And the last one is Shondrika Simmons. These are the people who didn't come.
Good evening. I am Attorney Shondrika Simmons. I came here because I need bike racks. I need bike racks at ITA and I need bike racks at PHS. Brothers brought the brake and we need bike racks.
Um, brothers brought the break and we need bike racks. Uh, we used to have them at ITA. We don't have them. Daryl says he's gonna handle it. I just want to let you know that's why I came here. Um, and then Trustee Dooley, you're doing that. You look amazing. Um, uh, but now that I'm here and I see what's happening, I would just like to know, um, like, when is, when you're, when you make your decision, what's the rollout time? Because everybody has said, told you that people will flee the district and all those good things. I'm here to let you know, I'm not putting my kids in a charter school, but my child who goes to ITA will not be going to Pontiac High and I will be homeschooling her. But I'm in a better position than most to be able to do that. I have an office. I'll turn it back into the virtual learning that we had during COVID. And hopefully she'll graduate early with, with, it'll help me out a whole lot. Um, but everybody doesn't have that option. But I deal enough with the drama that comes with PHS when she has to go over there for sports and training. And, and I'm not gonna deal with that on a regular, continuous basis every day. People have came up here and told you that I C, ITA is a safe place. It is. When my kids were at um, Alcott, West Bloomfield, and somebody spoke about it coming poaching the kids here, they came to Alcott to take my kids because my kids are very bright. Um, and they recruited me and said, we got this STEAM program. We're gonna put your kids in this and da, 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 da. And I put my kids over in West Bloomfield and I just didn't like the dynamics of it. And I don't think I should put my kids in a district where I don't pay taxes. I live here. I work here. I want to put my kids in a school district what I pay for. Um, all the millages that you're passing that I'm paying for with my dollars. Um, so I figured I need to take advantage of that and do what's best. And so I was grateful that ITA was an option for them and they very much succeeded in this. Um, for those who don't know, my last child, not the last one, but the next to last one, she got the most scholarships ever in the school district. She got accepted to four Ivy League schools and she's currently at Swarthmore College right now. And she, we chose the smaller school because that's what she was used to at ITA. Something smaller where she can build her tribe and she can excel. Um, and so you have a good thing here. Keep that in mind. I understand the logistics of it, the buses, the different buildings, all the issues that are happening. But I want you to keep in mind that you have a gym here, that you might want to keep it because it's a beacon of light for us to come here and patronize this district and utilize the services. And thank you so much.
That concludes our petitions and comments.
Alright, thank you very much. And thank you to everybody for sharing your views and your comments with us. We really do appreciate it. Um, I would like to continue uh, with our agenda and we
What's the name? Say, what's your name again? In Greer. Okay, just go, go ahead and have your three minutes. And you, whoever's next who didn't, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I act, I promised you I submitted it like first. And I didn't mean to be one of the only people not talking about ILA, ITA. I just wanted to make sure that somebody mentions the future of the special ed department. Um, my name's Alexis Hike. I have been a special ed teacher in this district for five years. I moved here specifically to teach here. I moved, I mean, across the country. It was a whole thing. Um, I saw the potential and I still see the potential. I know that there's a lot of emotions tonight. I just, you know, I understand that the average person doesn't know much about special ed. I get that. We're kind of only mentioned if something goes horribly wrong. I get that. I get that people are typically concerned with just the kids who score the highest on the tests. But I believe that all of the kids should have a voice in whatever happens. Um, I, okay. Um, forcing all of the special ed classes into one building would be taking away those voices and taking away their future, really. There would be no access to the general ed curriculum or to their peers and their movement into the general ed curriculum and their um, environment would be severely restricted. I know that Dr. Jamison presented before about how we're trying to get everyone into their least restrictive environments, but this wouldn't be possible if we're all placed into one building. Um, students would not be able to mainstream or to see their typically developing peers at all. Whereas at least right now, they can see them during gym or during the specials. They have at least some contact. Um, being in the same building as general ed also allows the students to try out those classrooms to determine their readiness. It allows that familiarity, that comfortability, and just sets the students up for success. Having to go to another school, never mind the process of changing a bus, we know that that's always an issue. Um, it put them about ten steps behind. They'd get escalated before they can even get into the new classroom. My students already don't do well with change historically. That's a stereotype we know. Um, I'm just here to advocate that we're setting them up for success. We know that segregation has never been the answer and I don't think it's the answer now. I know you didn't want to let me talk, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi. Hi. My name is Julie Greer and I am both a resident of Pontiac and a teacher at Pontiac High School for the last five years. Um, I was requested to speak on the behalf of a few teachers to make a point that there is a problem with transparency from the school board to the community at large. I can not only see it from a teacher's side, but I can just see it from today that there is a bit of a lack of trust grown from the lack of transparency and the lack of communication. Uh, adults and students alike showed up tonight because there was this fear that a huge change was, was coming without any word from either teachers, students, parents, or faculty. I don't think that one miscommunicated email or rumors would bring this kind of reaction. So I think uh, as a suggestion, maybe just a goal to fix that transparency. On the topic itself, uh, I would say I would be happy to accept ITA students at Pontiac High. However, I fear we lack the resources currently uh, for our own students right now. Pontiac High is a good school, but we still have a lot of necessary growth um, before any major change like this can occur. We have unique challenges and have a lot of students with a variety of needs. And just like someone uh, previously pointed out, uh, there could be the potential of a lot of those students slipping through the cracks if such a huge change is made too soon. Thank you for hearing me. Have a good day.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, now we're gonna move on down to board comments and announcements. And we'll start over to my left. Trustee Dooley, we'll start with you. Well, thank you each and every one of you that came out tonight. Like to see you back on a regular. Um, know that your voices are being heard. I agree with transparency and accountability to be at the forefront of our mission. You do have a voice at the table, all educational stakeholders, whether you are uh, internal public or external public. You are welcome. I agree with most of what has been said. I too have an issue with transparency and seeing that budget. So we can align our resources to deliver the most effective, efficient uh, gateway to educating our students to end up being a productive citizen, to have the necessary skills that qualify them to have said they had a world-class education. So as we move forward in this, understand that all roads lead to academic achievement, academic sustainability, and also the measurement of an outcome that we can see when we look at the data. We have to switch and be data-driven in everything we do so that everything we do will have checkpoints to academic success. I am new, you know that. You elected me. My seven thousand, six hundred and seventeen people that voted for me. Yes, I'm gonna say it every time. Every single time, because I appreciate those seven thousand, six hundred and seventeen people. So with that being said, I am at the table. We are going to make ourselves available to hear. I will say this, it was also my first time hearing about the rollout as others that were in the room. I don't necessarily believe the plan is s- set in stone, but however, you are correct. There has been conversation about it for it to get out there. So know that I will answer questions openly, honestly, without divulging the closed or, or uh, information when we go into those closed sessions. We are under obligation. But as my oath, I took it, I take it seriously to represent, to move this district forward. I too, I'm a product of Pontiac Schools. I graduated from Pontiac Schools, came back and even worked. And now I'm retired from Pontiac Schools. So I have a different lens that I'll be looking through, having been an educator myself. So know that I am working for you. I am working with you. And as we do that, I ask and solicit that you pray for us. Prayer changes things. Pray until something happens. And I guarantee you, I will report to you with transparency, truthfulness, and accountability to you as it relates to what we do as a board. We are a seven board member. We have one employee, that's our superintendent. And we have to monitor her. We have to make sure, or him or her, whoever would hold the position, but right now it's a her, Dr. Lorette. So we have to be accountable. Just want to tell you something really good. Last week I told you I had completed like five or six classes. Now I've completed all of them that make me a certified board member. So I'm working. I'm learning this stuff. And the one thing that is sticking out as I leave you will be that data point. And without that data, it will not drive decisions. And without that budget, I will not be allowed to align our resources. And I'm going to say it for the record, this district needs a forensic audit. Thank you. Alright, let's go down to Trustee Gross.
Good evening. I am so elated to see all of you here this evening. Not under these circumstances, but I am so glad because what it shows is your commitment to this district and how important it is to you. And I appreciate each and every one of you, including our children. As, as the longest-tenured board member right now, I had the opportunity to sit through um, some years of when schools were being not all, I, I actually, actually a vote to close. It was extremely difficult. So I learned from that experience. So I'm not gonna say too much about, you know, exactly what was said at the retreat or what was done. The superintendent, our employee, interim superintendent has made it clear where we stand. A lot of this was taken by surprise because I've not heard of changing this district into a charter and wow. So a lot of things that you guys talked about tonight, we just heard as well. But I have some guarantees. Because of how important you are and our children are, there's not gonna be anything done within this district when we don't speak to our stakeholders. That's our parents, our teachers. We're not gonna do that. We learn from that era way back when we closed several schools because of changes. I'm also a little hurt when we began to discuss our other, our children that are also a part of this district when we talk about our high schools and as if we have murderers and drug addicts and dope heads and, and everybody at the high school and I don't know where that's coming from. Because we don't have that. So we have, we are concerned about safety, not just at ITA, but throughout this district. So the mom who said her son is concerned that he's gonna go over there and I don't know if she used the word shot or whatever, but drugs and this or that, that's not true.